I'm going to call the meeting in order at 7:43. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can all stay standing. We lost a member of the community last week in a car accident. It wasn't really a car accident, but she was killed by her old car. It was a tragic accident and she was, I believe, 80 years old. We don't have a name, but I'd just like to have a moment of silence if we could for her and her family. Thank you. All right, we're going to start meeting with our board member reports and we can do all the new business together. Mr. O'Leary, do you want to start?
Just briefly, we'll get to some of the appointments and openings. This time of year is really great because we really do get to reach out to some of the liaison times that we have in terms of close to here on a regular basis. So we do have some openings in some of these boards committees and commissions and just want to make sure that as we go through the process, up the announcing, at least with my liaison sessions, we have a couple of openings with people. So again, we appreciate everybody that's been willing to serve on boards committees and commissions and volunteer their services and expertise. For the people who say, you know, I think itself, for the most part, you know, 99% of the people who serve the community here in these boards committees and commissions are actually volunteers. So we appreciate, I just want to acknowledge, appreciate all the time, effort, and energy that you've put into the assignments that you take on. Additionally, just to bring the ball up today as far as the Hillview Commission, we've had this request for proposals that went up a bit, and votes have been made, and I'm sure that they've won its full course of proposals, which is taken inside this week. And then there will be a stick-up tour on the contract that we hope to share online again. So, again, we've been working very hard over the last several months to commit all this to fruition and all the hard work that paid off. Of course, that's our voice, that we continue to be successful in the next few years and appreciate all the effort the administrations have had and effort put into getting it all down. On that, of course. I just wanted to mention that we also had another member of the community who passed away beginning to 97, Millie Sullivan. Been on Central Street, just you drive by our house every day. Lived there probably 65 years, 70 years, raised nine children in the community, all good members of the community and contributing members of the community, and Millie and Sully, her husband, with the fixtures in the community, so both 70 years. So Millie passed away, had a wonderful family, was a wonderful lady, and she and her, her maiden name was Orrock. And the Orks, they also had like seven or nine children too, they grew up on North Street. So the Orks and the Sullivans took care of about half the school population for many years. But two wonderful families, and Millie is a wonderful lady and wonderful contributing members of this community, are very active in the St. Teresa's community. Just wanted to mention that we share the family's lives, but also celebrate the time that we had and the contributions that you made.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Wallner?
I'll pass because I can see CL is here. They're going to write in tonight's sub-level, let them have their seat.
Okay. Mr. Studo?
Okay. Mrs. Manny Pallett?
Just really.
Just really quickly, I had the opportunity to watch the Maskers' performance of SpongeBob on Friday and Saturday night. It was fabulous. Coming up again Saturday, Friday, this coming Friday, 7:30 and Saturday at 4:00 if you didn't get tickets. It's worth a watch. It's a great family fun time, so come on down and congratulations to the crew, the cast, the directors, the music program, everybody.
SpongeBob, right?
SpongeBob, yes.
It's never disappointing.
Oh, my goodness.
They always do such a great job.
So, so well done, so well done. So that's all, just wanted to mention that.
And Veterans Events Committee, we met and discussed the Veterans Services and the Dinner, which were both a great success. We had a great turnout at the Hillview. To have it back in time at the Hillview was just a great thing and it was so beautiful in there and we had people dancing and just having a great time and to see the veterans there and just to honor them and it was a really nice night and a really great service up on the Common. And we are talking about working on reeds across America. We were hoping to be able to do it for this year, but it's quite a bit of money, so we're going to have to do some more fundraising. We did some fundraising at the dinner and people were very generous, but it's pretty expensive, so we're going to shoot for next year to be able to put a reed on every veteran cemetery plot in Riverside. So, working towards that, I'm sure you'll see fundraisers popping up soon for that. All the new business, I feel I need to discuss this with the board. Jeff Yule put a letter to the editor in the transcript, basically saying that this board and the school committee and other heads of the town have never been shy about speaking out about hate and denouncing hate, whether it was 9/11, you know, hate against the Muslims, whether it was PLM and hate against, you know, blacks and it's been pretty silent right now with the hate against the Jews, the anti-Semitism and what's going on in the Middle East and the hatred that we're hearing in our own country. So I think, you know, we've set a precedent about denouncing hate in general and against anybody, so I'd like to see us speak out about that and denounce the hatred that's being shown towards the Jewish population and the anti-Semitism. So your thoughts on that? If we could, you know? It's not like we haven't done it before.
It's not like we haven't done it before, but what I find interesting is that the person that penned the letter is, as far as what is written in a letter, there is a question to disagree with about that one. But I don't necessarily, feels as though I need to respond to Mr. Yule.
Just to be clear.
I don't need him to call Neo or Aslan.
Just to be clear, I'm not asking for that. It's not my thought process going that we are being silent about it, you know, we shouldn't be.
That's fine, but in the past, most of us at some point brought up certain issues that have taken place, whether it be nationally or internationally. And some of us have been criticized for using our position here as a bully pulpit for national and international issues, and it's been nonartisan, we shouldn't be doing those things. So, but I find it interesting, you know, is that Mr. Yule's calling out this board, school committee, superintendent of schools, all of our faith-based associations in the community who are the threat of this community, saying that, again, he's not aware necessarily of what we're doing privately on our own, conversations with that are taking place, and he's looking for us to take positions on matters before the community as a whole, as a country as a whole, as a world, as a nation. That's what he's looking for. I'd be happy to accommodate and have you be, because there's plenty to talk about. So this is the same fellow that just less than three years ago, you know, sent out a flyer criticizing Black Lives Matter, critical race theory, accusing the school committee of having critical race theory in the school system when they did not, signing people's names and endorsing candidates, assuming that that was going to be happening in our community, when these people didn't even sign on to it. So I have, the only problem I have is responding to Mr. Yule.
I'm asking, I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to respond to Mr. Yule.
And I'm not going to do that.
That's not, that just got me thinking that we are being silent and we have spoken against hate in the past, and so that is all I'm asking.
Yeah, the thing that I find interesting also is that he's, what he stated in the paper was on behalf of the Republican Town Committee supposedly. I went on the website this morning, there is nothing on the Republican Town Committee website or Facebook page denouncing anything, as Mrs. Yule put her Thanksgiving turkey, you know? Mr. Yule has a Facebook page, he's a candidate for the Republican State Committee, nothing on there, yet he has the audacity. And yet, this isn't the first time, but he's presented himself as speaking for a group, but they haven't even taken a position. He did the same thing three years ago when he was a candidate, a writing candidate, a Black Lives Matter, very hateful flyer that was mailed out to our community. And that's why I'm hesitant to respond to Mr. Yule.
So I'm not asking you to respond to Mr. Yule. I'm just asking you to respond in general as a board to denounce hatred and the anti-Semitism. That's all. I only brought up the letter because it got me thinking that we've been silent. That's all.
Yet each and every one of us has the ability and the opportunity to speak on matters.
But we've done it before.
That's fine, and I'm not opposed to doing it. I'll do it every, I'll find an issue when we need it.
No, no, I don't want you to do that. Oh, my goodness. I really don't want you to do that.
Well then, you know, you can't do what you asked for. And again, I have no problem embracing the comments that were made in that letter.
I'm not talking about the letter. We have Jewish people in our community.
And Jewish relatives.
Yeah, so that's all I'm asking, just for us to publicly denounce what's happened. That's all. And I'm not talking about one side or the other, I'm talking about hatred in general.
So there's no doubt that the anti-Semitism in America has increased substantially? And my family does go to temple. They're carrying guns to protect the temple.
My husband does private security for.
So it's little.
Actually, we should have, yeah. So I.
It's a little bad.
It is bad, and so that's.
So anyways, the point is is that, you know, the anti-Semitism, however you look at it, is bad, as is always evidence. And we, as, and the reason why we kind of brought up about the Black Lives Matter and everything before is that we had a number of people come to us on that behalf of the church board and asking us to, as a board, to like, you know, to address them. And my response was, we can't do everything, we need groups to get together, and that's where, where it's from hate come from, and that's where the Human Rights Group came from. So in the same capacity, we haven't been asked in this, you know, veiled request to do something about it. The Human Rights Group actually, I'm aware of what they're doing, they actually like the call that Jeff is making, even though it has a whole device of science, which is a whole nother center. So anti-Semitism is real, when you go to temple and there's guns up front, scary. I write ones, that's scary.
Especially somebody who's an anti-violence person.
Totally, yeah, that's beyond agreeable. And then what's happening, you know, I think what's happening in Palestine, Hamas is bad, I mean horrible, and I wish the Palestinian people were, this is going to be controversial to say this to, but in America, when we were oppressed by Britain, people within our community rose up and lost their lives to African forces. I wish the Palestinian people would do the same thing to Hamas, because Hamas is obviously horrible within their community, they're dying now. I wish that they would rise up if they're not too disenfranchised against Hamas and help Israel get rid of this horrible thing and solve a long-term problem, because this is just a awful situation. So I think I'm saying that. Thank you.
I mean, I'm just, I'm sure everybody, I don't, to me, it doesn't, it bothers me equally to see a kidnapped Jewish child or a maimed Palestinian child. I have the same visceral response as a human being to those, both of those are atrocities to me. And there's obviously politics at play there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I have the same visceral response when I hear of a school shooting, umpteen school shootings, someone that shot three Palestinian college students, one of whom is now paralyzed. Any kind of these behaviors that we just accept as normal are just atrocities that we've read about in the history books, they're just continuing and continuing and continuing. And I didn't actually read the letter, and I agree with Mr. O'Leary that I wouldn't necessarily take, you know, speak up based on that letter, because I didn't even read it, so I don't even know what they're talking about. But are you asking for us to issue some sort of a proclamation?
No.
Because I think as a board.
No, we didn't do that, no, we didn't do that with the other thing.
But as a board, we've dedicated months to certain, you know, disenfranchised groups, we've dedicated, you know, we've done things as a board to show that we do take a stand. Certainly, the school committee, they're invested in ensuring, you know, that violence doesn't occur and inclusion is a part of, you know, not just science, because that flyer had a no-science thing and no free meals, no free school meals at a time when people had lost their businesses, they had lost their jobs, their, people are still trying to recuperate and figure out how they're putting food on the table and things like that. So we can definitely pick that apart, if I got my hands on that letter, I'm certain I could pick it apart, but it's not worthy of us spending time on that. If you're asking us as a board to denounce anti-Semitism and atrocities and raping women and children and maiming people.
Publicly denouncing that, yes.
Who are we denouncing for doing that?
Hatred.
Yes, because I've seen videos of many, many, you know, newborn babies that had to be, they died and had to be rescued, and I've seen, I've learned as we read about and hear about it, how orchestrated this attack was, knowing they were going to go in and get generations of families that were there just together in a prayerful community, you know, three generations of, that are still, they're still being held. So we can talk about this for the next 30 years or more, but, you know, I think as a board to kind of slapshot respond to Mr. Yule, that isn't our style and I don't, I hope we don't start to do that just because Mr. Yule writes a letter. And I, we sat with Mr. Yule at the Veterans Dinner and his wife, that didn't come up once. So, you know, that, that's an opportunity when you're breaking bread with people to hear their perspective on it, but.
So I wasn't trying to make this about the letter, I was saying the letter.
Well, that's how you raised it.
That's what precipitated the thing.
I said the letter got me to think that we have been silent and we should speak about the hatred that's happened.
If I can make a suggestion to you and all of us, if something gives you pause and makes you think about it, you want to bring something up to the board and use this portion of the agenda to articulate your thoughts and concerns, it's more than appropriate. And if the rest of us want to join in or, so, fine, you know, we can, we can and we should do that. And there are times when we shouldn't remain silent, so not in disagreement about that. It's just, you know, I just find it ironic that what's precipitating this discussion is a letter to the editor from an individual who's presenting himself as representing people that he didn't even ask them for their opinion on. There's nothing on the webpages, he didn't do it, it's a, it's a pattern, it's a pattern in practice, it's a pattern in practice that he employs, which is wrong. And it causes harm, it caused harm three years ago, it causes discussion now where, you know, people may construe what I'm saying as anti-Semitic, which is quite the opposite. You know, I find it interesting, because, you know, I spent 45 minutes listening to Senator Chuck Schumer, who's the highest-ranking Jewish official in the country, addressed Congress last week. He did an absolutely amazing job articulating and giving us all, giving us all a history lesson as to why Israel is where it's at, you know, what has precipitated the whole thing, for centuries, what has happened, the anti-Semitic causes that have taken place and the effects of it over centuries, and why we're here today. And the clear delineation between what has happened, the anti-Semitism that Israel is around and it should, is important, should be important, and we should, you know, cut off just saying it's unacceptable, unacceptable against the Jews, it's unacceptable against any group of people. But specifically the Jews, because this is the issue that he had. Okay, today's world, but, you know, the solution is a two-state solution over there, which the Arab countries and the Palestinians have not embraced for 40 or 70 years. And that's what needs to take place.
Right.
You know, but it's not taking place, but that's a political discussion. And again, as far as we know, what the Israeli government is doing and the current people that are in control there, vast differences of opinion as to how things are being handled, how things should be done, but that doesn't change the anti-Semitic feelings that are out there and the effects where people who go into temple every week now feel as if they had to defend themselves, have to hire security people to protect their place of worship in the United States, never mind over there.
Correct.
So, so you want to denounce it? Absolutely.
That's all.
Cut off, denounce.
I just, I just felt that, I didn't want to be silent.
Fine, that's how you should have brought it up rather than.
I'm sorry, I apologize, because I didn't want to say about the letter, I was just saying the letter.
But the thing is.
Is what made me think about it.
It's the hypocrite that wrote the letter that's precipitating, and good for him because, you know, even silly people have good ideas once in a while, but, you know, he shouldn't be the, he shouldn't be the messenger, he's the wrong messenger. And again, he's silent on so many issues, but he's silent on so many issues.
That's a personal opinion, and I really didn't want to make it about that.
He quotes Reverend Luther King, there are so many issues that he's silent on that he should, he should be vocal on, that's what should, so.
So especially to you, Mr. Wallner.
Let me go first then, if you want to end on a positive note.
I just want to say personally, you know, my heart goes out to Joyce and.
So last few years, we've been doing lighting on the menorah.
Well, if you want to go personal, if you want to end on a high note and positive, let me go before you.
Okay, go ahead, please, okay, yeah.
I also think denigrating people, which is very popular culturally right now, even in America where we have created our whole country on debate and disagreement and, but then coming together, you know, once we air those things out, but these types of things where people just denigrate each other because they disagree or they're calling people names because they have a difference of opinion about something, let it go, let it go, because you don't agree with me and I don't agree with you, talk it through. But when you treat anybody, we're talking anti-Semitism specifically, with a level of inhumane disdain that is history really repeating itself, it's, it's just atrocity, repetitive atrocity. So I don't know anyone, no matter where they side or fall on the issue, at least anyone that I've spoken with, or like Mr. Illy, Blair, there are many discussions that I've had with people about this, I don't know anyone, wherever they come from, that thinks that that is okay, acceptable, violence because of someone's religion, period. I don't know anyone that would presume someone's okay with that because they're perceived as being silent on it. So denigrating people, maybe because they don't want to have a bully pulpit or speak publicly about it, I don't think is the answer either, I think it's wrong, so.
So show your support on Sunday, December 10th at 4 o'clock, there'll be a menorah lighting on the Common.
Excellent.
I think it's about third, fourth year.
Perfect.
Show up.
When was that, December 10?
Sunday, December 10th, 4 o'clock, right in the Common.
A great time.
We've always had a good turnout.
A great time for the community to come together and show, yeah, show your strength, yeah.
Get a little history lesson too.
Thank you. Thank you for that conversation. And now I will open it up. Oh, Mr. Studo, did you have anything to say? I don't want to forget you up there. I'll take that as a no. You're upset?
I think enough was said. Well, we just move on.
Okay. And now I'll open it. You're welcome. I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone here for public comment, or anyone on Zoom for public comment?
I think the only thing I was going to say.
Could you, could you come up to the microphone?
Over here, Jeff, you can take a seat right at that table.
The only thing I just wanted to add, I appreciate you bringing that up, because the enormity of the situation probably surpasses the 9/11. And so it just happens to be a huge thing, and America's always accepted anyone from any country, anywhere, from Ethiopia to Congo, anything else. So I think it's kind to bring it up and just be aware of it. And I think the board is the leadership of the town, and so everything usually works from the top down, and so I applaud you bringing it up, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Anybody else? Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Gilberto?
I am not seeing anybody, Madam Chair.
Okay. And we'll move on. To an update on the transportation services and.
Madam Chair, can you?
Yep.
By way of introduction, we're joined by the Director of Public Services, who has a presentation that she can review as an update, not just for the board, but for the community, I did place it in the meeting packet. Lil, I don't know if you want to work from over here on the laptop. She is joined by staff who are here from the Council on Aging, who are really the epicenter of transportation here in North Reading at this point in time. I just, Bill, you're going to see the presentation, they are dealing with a significant increase in demand for transportation, not just outside of town, but here within town, much of which is attributed to the expansion of programming here in town. I don't normally do this, but there's a number of faces that I don't think are familiar with the community, so I'm going to actually ask Ms. Manzali, the Director of Public Services, could you just step forward and introduce your staff who's here, because I know there's a number of folks who are here. You can go right to that mic too, if you'd like.
Good evening.
Hi.
Kim Manzali, Director of the Senior Center. Night caller, can you wave, one of our Vandappers, Valerie Shu, senior board member, showing career, our administrative assistant, and the name of the office is on the top of the transportation. and Lily Norris, the head of the transportation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing it. Appreciate that.
I'd just like to say it's nice to see you all supporting this. And I was formerly the liaison on that committee. So I'm very familiar with the really hard work they're putting into this. And there's a lot of, a lot of wheels turning and a lot of creative minds here just trying to make things work. So thank you all for your time on that. Well, you can take the floor.
Sure. I have a microphone. Okay. So Mike is going to pull up a presentation. I only have three slides because it's an overview of what we've been doing.
Will, can we speak up a little because it's very.
Sure. Yep.
But that's, that mic is only.
Okay.
There's no, there's no one for this one.
We're working on that.
Just going to say a public service announcement. There's been a lot of comments in recent weeks with regard to the quality of the sound in the room, which has been challenging for years, as folks know, and we've only made it more complicated.
How about the quality of the comments?
It's only been more challenge, more challenging by the advent of Zoom as well. I do want folks to know that our information technology department has engaged the services of a vendor who's been in here multiple times to come up with recommendations for how we can improve the sound going out of the room as well as the sound within the room. But in the meantime, I do need to remind folks, it's really important to project your voice, especially if you're not seated up at the table here, so that folks on NorCam can hear it, which is usually pretty good because they have a mic over here. It's the Zoom that gets a little more tricky. We have folks on that venue. So definitely project toward the center of the room if you could. And with that, I will share my screen and turn it over to Ms. Hartman.
So the first slide, funding for pilot transportation services is just to acknowledge that our community voted at town meeting to fund pilot money, knowing that the types of services that existed in town to that point, including the Ring and Ride, would be changed. And we would need to do some pilot programming to test what the need really was and to help people, especially those sort of fragile seniors and disabled people who needed the Ring and Ride formally to get to their medical appointments. So our pilot services started off with that local investment. Having that local investment has helped us in applying for grants to show that it's a real local concern and that our residents care enough to invest their own money as match if needed for grants. So you'll see in non-local funding, since that June town meeting, we've received a state earmark of $50,000 for transportation. Our Council on Aging Board applied for a grant that expands programming to Aldersgate and also funds some additional driver hours. And recently, we received a notice of award for the MassDOT Mobility Management Program and for operations. Those two require a match, but essentially, we've already started services as of July 1 to help those people who used to use Ring and Ride. And the MassDOT grants will help us extend that for another 18 months from January of 2024 down to June of 2025. So non-local funding is 140. So we've more than tripled our initial investment by applying for grants. Okay. So bear with me. I'll try to focus on little parts of this to begin with. So the very top line, Senior Center in Town Rides. This is a service that the town has been providing through the Senior Center for years, since at least 2005, I could find any annual reports. If we look at fiscal year '23, in the first six months, they were doing about 460 rides a month. In the second half of fiscal year '23, they were up to 600 rides a month. And in the past six months, the first half of fiscal '24, which I'm using to project the rest of our pilot period, local rides through the Senior Center van have gone up to 888 a month. So it's been a dramatic increase. The town traditionally funds 35 hours a week of driver hours, but with the warrant article, with the small MCOA grant, and now with MassDOT funding, we'll be able to extend that to 49 hours a week to help cover those increasing rides. Again, staying in the middle two columns, we're going to look at medical out of town. Through fiscal year '23 through June 30th, MEVA, which is our regional transportation provider, was doing about 56 medical rides a month for North Reading seniors and disabled veterans. They decided as a board to change their service model and to reduce services. So as of July 1, you'll see that the usage has gone down dramatically. They're only doing about four rides a month. They now restrict destinations to Boston and Peabody only, three days a week only. And that four months reflects not only their old users calling them, but also whenever the Senior Center gets a request and we know it's within MEVA's current coverage, we refer it there. So that's maximizing their service so far that we've seen. To make up the difference, we've used pilot funding. Our first, our first method is actually the least expensive to the town, and that's case management. So we work with individuals who call needing rides to find out if they have resources that they don't know about, like health insurance, or if they could apply for MBTA the ride and maybe hit a transfer point in Wilmington or Reading. And we've been able to help a lot of people get served that way without needing any further town support. Then our highest volume per month has been with volunteer medical rides. And I'm amazed not only with the Transportation Committee's commitment, but also we currently have nine active volunteer drivers who are willing to use their vehicle. And we've fulfilled, you can see the two numbers below, like 99% of rides with volunteers. That's going into Boston, Stonem, Woburn, Winchester, Burlington, places that MEVA no longer goes, but where most of our residents need to go for medical appointments. So kudos to them. They've been amazing. When we offer a volunteer service, people can be nervous because it doesn't seem reliable. What if my volunteer doesn't show up? Or what if they cancel last minute? Also, for ADA compliance, if we offer a service where people use their own sedans, we need to offer a parallel opportunity for people in wheelchairs. So people have even access. So to do that, we have the Senior Center medical or Senior Center van and sometimes an additional driver paid by the warrant article funds doing some of those extra trips. They've done a few wheelchair rides. They've also sometimes done a one-way trip if a volunteer couldn't get back for somebody. But it's only averaged about one a month that we've needed that additional sort of van on the road specifically for medical. If you look at the volume of how much it increases locally, really, we've been investing more in getting the local rides done with driver hours more than the medical. And then we have a further backup. You may have heard that our vans aren't both in service right now. So we do sometimes rent a second vehicle. It could be just a van that one of our drivers can use, or we can rent a shuttle service. We've used NRT twice in the past month to help fill rides. They can do local rides or medical, whatever we need to be that supplemental volume for the day. So those numbers in the middle column represent what we've been able to do with the pilot funding so far. And with those MassDOT grants, we expect to continue that level of service through June of 2025. With no additional local funds, it's just extending how long that warrant article will serve us. In terms of capacity, just two notes here. We've been sort of patching together with a lot of volunteer effort and different staff involved, patching together the response when somebody calls for a ride. The MassDOT grant will allow us to increase hours for a program coordinator at the Senior Center so that we can have a central person that's sort of in charge and tracking it all and making sure that everything is addressed. We've been doing that, I'll assure you. But with the volume of local rides increasing and with our staff currently stretched, it will be a good investment for MassDOT to give us some more hours. And the MassDOT grant in January will also allow us, for the first time, to look at ride scheduling software to sort of improve our routing for those 888 a month, that's 30 to 40 a day, to help our van schedule its routes efficiently and get as many people where they need to go as possible. That software might also help us with automating our process to find a volunteer. And if no volunteer responds within a certain amount of time, triggering one of those backup options. So it will increase capacity of the program and make it more reliable. I'm going to jump down to the next slide, then we could come back. This is a breakdown of that 18-month period, how much of the MassDOT grant is funding and how much we're using of the warrant article for match. So the grant comes in two pieces. Mobility management, which is that coordinator hours and the software, they pay a greater portion of, they're paying 80% of the cost. The second half, the operations, they pay a 50-50 match. So that will increase driver hours. It'll allow us to have a little bit in our budget if volunteers want mileage reimbursement for going down to Boston. And if we needed it, we could use backup vehicles or vendors up to 16,000. I did meet with our grant officer on Friday, and she assured me that if we don't end up needing those backups, but we want to put more of our own driver hours on the grant, that they're comfortable with that shift happening during the grant period. I guess should we go up to sustainability or?
Back up to the slide.
Yeah. So what happens after June of 2025?
Isn't June of 2025 or is it June FY25?
That's the same thing.
No, it's not the same.
It's June 30th of 2025.
You have Y23 in the first column, and then you have January 24th to January 25th. So is that a calendar year?
It's an 18-month grant.
Okay, thank you.
So after the grant ends, I think the town will be faced with some decisions. Potentially because our ride volume has been increasing for our pre-existing in-town service, to sustain that service level, it might mean funding those driver hours from another source. Or it could be potentially rider fees, which some towns use to charge a nominal amount when people go to the grocery store to help fund the driver hours. With the next chunk, I just want to mention with the MassDOT grants, they tend to be renewable. They're not considering it a pilot program for the grant. So we will be eligible to reapply. And after the first 18-month period, it's in 12-month increments. There are some other potential sources of funding, additional grants. And I, I would speak on behalf of the Transportation Committee, but they're here as well. I think if MEVA were to expand its service back up to where it was, that would reduce the town's obligation. They had used cherry sheet funds that never went into our local budget to do it before. So if they or another partner would pick up service, we may find that as a less costly alternative. So the grant will temporarily increase the hours for a coordinator at the Senior Center. It's something that after, after any grants, if the town would consider, they might want to sustain that level of hours to support Senior Center programming and transportation, or it could shift back to part-time. We do have other sources, other grant sources for salary there already. And then last, ride software. It's a great investment now. We'll be looking to the future when we go out to bid for that software. It may be something that the town opts to keep because it will improve the efficiency of our van. It also would enable us, if we wanted to, to begin collecting fees in the same way like an EZ Pass account does, where people might connect a credit card and have their fees paid as they sign up for rides. If we were to try to do a cash system or to use our administrative staff to do it any other way, I think it would be a lot more difficult to implement and sustain a fee system. So that's, that's the overview. And I welcome any questions. And any of these folks might be able to answer as well as me.
Thank you. Melissa, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. I know how hard you guys have been working on this. Mr. Gilberto?
Just to maybe give a little summary on this, you know, we, we had, and I'll point back to Mary Preney, the longtime Senior Center Director. She was closely involved in working with MEVA to come up with a Ring and Ride program. This board was supportive of it. Mr. Briscoe was involved directly in many of the conversations. It was a good program that because of the timing and the pandemic, never really got off the ground and saw its full potential. And at the same time, MEVA, like nearly every other transportation entity, and when I say MEVA, it's the Meramec Valley Transit Authority framework, doesn't know. They sort of, sort of streamlined their scope and identified, you know, that they're going to limit the transportation that they do, right at the time when the need and the demand for the rides really started to increase, about eight, nine months ago, I guess it was, maybe even more. So that was unfortunate timing. We have been able to step forward and fill in the gap largely because of the effort of the folks at the Senior Center, but also the work of the Transportation Committee and Ms. Hartman in coming up with a variety of funding sources, the select board's willingness to ask for that funding for a pilot program and town meetings' willingness to fund it. I think we're confident in what we've put together in terms of a really good pilot. But we recognize that it is a pilot. And I think we were here to sort of say that the community also ought to be aware that it is a pilot as well. And its ability to be sustained beyond June of 2025 is a significant question mark for us right now. I think we're all comfortable with proceeding, you know, with the pilot in the way that it exists. But we recognize that the, the future is uncertain, uncertain. The final thing I'll just add is, you know, I've had a lot of conversation about the ride, which for those who don't know is a paratransit transportation in MBTA service communities. We are not one of those communities. We have the classification of being an adjacent MBTA community, which comes with its own obligations, as we all know from our discussions with the town planner. But the ride is a supplement to an extensive public, public transportation network that does not exist in North Reading. So, you know, I do think we ought to recognize, we're trying to really fill two roles. We're trying to fill the role of a transportation network that doesn't exist. And then we're layering in a paratransit transportation program as well at the same time. And I think that we've done a fantastic job, you know, over the past few years, but more specifically over the past six to nine months as we move forward. I think we're all proud of the effort that's here and the work of the Transportation Committee. I think we're concerned about, you know, what happens when that 18 months runs out. But I think we're all comfortable with proceeding in this, in this direction, given the resources that are available right now. So thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to offer that.
Thank you. Thank you. So did anybody have any questions?
First, I just want to say thank you to you and the committee. And partly the liaison was involved in this, I'm sure, too. But the whole, part of the whole point of bringing on the director was for the director to pinpoint these grant sources and bring them in. So it seems to me like you've done a fantastic job at that. And we are so grateful that you're, you've done that. So thank you for that, first off. It obviously directs, we translate to some real services that people need. And, you know, Mr. Gilberto, it was probably, maybe there weren't that many people going out during COVID or needing rides during COVID, but obviously that's picked up. So it would be great to, and also to thank the volunteers for committing to this. That's tremendous. So I have, I was thinking, when you say that the grants may be renewable, but we have a match, can you run through those, just a quick projection of what you think that would be? So is it the same 60, do you think? Or, or are you thinking that, you know, once it runs out, it might be more than that in FY26?
Yep. So in our third slide, it does mention the match for the 18-month period. The match for that amount of time is 37,000. So it's about 24,000 a year.
And does that include the 60 that was appropriated or?
We're taking.
Or is that part of it?
We're taking this out of the 60 for the first 18 months. We're taking this out of the 60 for the first 18 months. If we receive the grant again and needed to identify sources of match, it might be about 24,000 a year to sustain the same service level, plus or minus inflation.
And then, I don't know if that's something we would be, hopefully we could identify in the budget. I know our budget is, you know, we always have this kind of last minute. We don't have, it's not last minute, I shouldn't say that, but.
No, it often is.
We're always trying to meet that.
It's fair.
It's really tough, but my other question is, are there any grants available for us to purchase a paratransit vehicle or transportation vehicle like that?
Yep, so I got an update on Friday. Mr. Dan Greenberg, who's on the Transportation Committee in the Zoom, applied in fiscal year '22 for a paratransit van. It's been delayed in production, and the new ETA for that van is fall of 2024. And the CIPC is evaluating.
I know.
The CIPC is evaluating a request to fund the match on another vehicle that might arrive two years later, so that we're scheduling the replacement of our 2008 and our 2015 van before they expire.
So if that, if that, those funds could be used, that could be attributed to what we're supposed to contribute in as a matching piece to the grant?
They are all through Mast dot, but it's a separate capital application with a 20% match on that one.
Oh, I see.
And then continuing mobility, they'd require 20% match or operations a 50% match.
I'm also just thank you for this, it's excellent.
Yes, they've really worked hard on this. Anyone else? Or, Mr. Leary?
I've been sitting here a long time. This is a quantum leap, truly. I mean, what you've done, and I know it's been ongoing for several years here. We've been trying to get it going, but you've been able to pull it all together in the last several months. And look at the results. And also, this is the first time that I've actually ever seen the needs and the demands quantified and put before us. And it's eye-opening to see that the demand, the demand is being met this high. You know, if you were to talk to most people in the community, you wouldn't think that the demand is that great. But it is, it's significant. And what's the program, it's become more real and people start talking about it. The demand is just going to increase substantially. So there are people now that can't get to these appointments and are finding it difficult to do so. And we're providing the opportunity. And like I said, this is a quantum leap, and I applaud everybody's effort here. And again, with Town Meeting, put the money up, that certainly assisted in the enthusiasm that goes along with it. Many times we talk about let's form a community and do things, and by the way, there's no money for it. But with the money, you know, it provides other opportunities for matching grants and all the rest, with the right people in the right place doing the right things for us. And I really have to applaud your efforts. You know, for what you're projecting the cost to be in order to maintain a program like this, it's not very large, but in the overall scheme of things in the budget. And for what we expend on our seniors and disabled individuals in the community compared to other areas, it's not an awful lot to ask. And I think we need to prioritize this, support what's happening here, allow it to grow, and to meet the needs of the people that really truly do need it. And again, it couldn't be done without the help of volunteers too, because that's really is, picking up the slack, I'm sure, for the land. This is a wonderful presentation. I appreciate all the effort and the progress that's been made. And I just look forward to sit here and support, in any way I can, the effort, an ongoing effort to bring it to fruition and have it grow. Because it's going to grow anyway, the demand is there. So it's, this is the first time I've ever seen it quantified to this degree. I thank you for that too.
I'll add that, so Commission on Disability and Transportation Survey is going out in the census for January. It's a four-page survey to assess needs from transportation and for people who don't have access. And so that helped quantify it even more. So that's going out with the census in January. Hope to get the results back in the first quarter of that year. So we'll know even more and quantify it even more. And it has been wonderful to see, we should give ourselves some credit. We defined, this board defined the Transportation Committee. We unanimously supported it. This is what we have as a result of it. And we also unanimously recognize that Public Services Director was in a central position to fill, which we did. And again, we're seeing the results of this. And what's also been wonderful is to see the Council of Beijing, which used to be an advisory board, is now doing so much in doing work and doing things that, you know, my original complaint was, we don't do anything but listen to the director talk about stuff. And that has been very helpful. So it's been wonderful to see all of this work going in and seeing it all kind of go central. And I know there's more to come, which is even better. So thank you, everybody, for what you're doing.
Mr. Gilberto.
I have Chair Three here to the Public Services Director. We are, we have some positions that are senior tax work-off program positions as well. I know if you wanted to speak to that opportunity to the extent that might be helpful for either for the program or for the residents.
Sure. So some of the volunteers for the volunteer medical ride driving program are part of the town's tax work-off program. So for the first 100 hours they do of medical rides or other mixed services for the town, they can reduce their property tax bill up to $1,500. And we have a few participants who are doing that, but the majority are not actually receiving any compensation. Either they're too young for that benefit, or they just chose not to apply. They started before we advertised it, and they're committed. So it's a nice mix, and all volunteers go through the same screening, no matter whether you're volunteering for a property tax break or just to give your time.
Commit to sound. And then the real senior problem ended up on the front page of the Reddies, right? Reddies magazine.
Yeah, I saw that.
Haven't read the article yet, but I certainly noticed the picture on the front. So congratulations on that as well. Good job.
Mr. Sudo, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, okay.
Mr. De Naro.
Yeah, I just had two, after one.
Yeah.
Just so we can hand it home in Zoom. Okay, thank you.
Hi, there, Paul De Naro. I only have two questions. You brought up the after the 18 months. And so my two questions are, are you planning on using this in connection with something like the ride as well? Is this like another service set on top of that?
Yep, so.
That's totally want to ask them that. So the question on 18 months is, what happens if they, how does it work? Does it just drop dead? No more money coming in to give you any lead time to let you know that this, we're not going to fund anymore? Or how does that timeline work?
So we, I'll enter the second question first. We received our notice of award around December 1st, and that's probably around the same time we'd get next time. So we'd be looking to hear from Mast dot around December of 2024 to see if our grant will continue into July of 2025. So I guess six months lead ideally.
So how many employees do you think you'd have by that time?
So the grant is currently allowing us to fund additional driver hours, about half-time or 14 hours, and additional coordinator hours, about 16 hours. But the Senior Center already has part-time staff in the driver role. So we may be able to use backup drivers and sub-drivers to fill those hours. It might not be new people. And with the coordinator, we're also hoping to just increase hours for someone during the grant period, after which they might stay if we can afford it, or they might go back down to their current. So it doesn't necessarily mean any new employees during.
Okay, so it looks like you're not going to, you wouldn't have any responsibility for any things that would come smack you in the face, that you have to get rid of a bunch of trucks and let people go and stuff like that?
Hopefully not.
Yeah, okay, those are my questions.
I do want to answer the first question about the ride. So North Reading residents, if you have a disability that prevents you from walking three-quarters of a mile or standing in the elements, even though you can't get the ride from your home in North Reading, you can still apply for the ride. And they will do a ride from anywhere in Wilmington, Reading, Middleton, or Linfield to your destination. We have had several families find that this works for them. If they have maybe a daughter or a relative in a neighboring town that might, you know, have them over for the morning and they pick up the ride there. It also could be that you're comfortable driving a short distance but not into the city, so you can meet the ride at a spot that's somewhere you feel safe driving. Or the Senior Center van already drives a little bit into Wilmington to a couple of medical facilities. So you might be able to coordinate, so with the ride taking you into Boston, you might be able to use the Senior Center as your little shuttle to get out of North Reading.
Now, I wasn't aware that there was some restriction with North Reading with the ride.
Yep.
What is that?
They'll pick up in any of the towns to the south of us, but they don't pick up in North Reading. North Reading residents are eligible, you just have to apply and.
Now, why is that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. De Naro.
That's okay.
Yeah, if you want to contact, yeah, yeah, just so we can move on.
Well, usually a customer.
So, yeah, you can always contact Will and have a conversation with her. Children's are all.
You really answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
In relation to those services though, North Reading has been the donut hole for years. Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority goes to all the towns in the north of us, the borderists, and the T comes out into the south of us, and North Reading's the donut hole, so.
Yeah, but that's valuable information, thank you. You know, that if people can get to those other towns, you know, however they can, if they can access the ride. So thank you for that information. All right, anything else? That was very informative. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you to the committee for all your hard work. Yes, you do. All right, so we're going to move on to the review. An opportunity to purchase a property on Central Street. So a property was brought to the board's attention, and we've discussed it. So, and felt that the public should be aware of it. So, Mr. Gilberto, do you want to take that?
Sure, I can just give a brief overview. Madam Chair Three, while I'm working on this, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay? So that folks at home can, if you see a map, that might be helpful.
And so just for the public to know, there's no price right now, there's no real details. We just felt it's something that we're discussing, and we felt that it should be transparent, so that everyone knows that we are looking at it.
Madam Chair Three, you, just very briefly to follow up. We've been contacted and made aware of a potential opportunity to acquire property located at One Central Street. For those who may or may not be familiar with the area, this is right at the intersection of Central and Chestnut Street. The parcel in question, thank you, Mr. Wong, I'll highlight it there, is bounded by Central Street to the west, by a privately owned lot to the south, by the town-owned recreation center, that number five, Central Street, to the north, and by the Wheeler Barn property to the east, which is the gateway to Eptus River Park. So we own property on two sides of this parcel, and so it makes it an intriguing opportunity that the Select Board is considering and will be further considering in the coming weeks. We know that there's been a lot of discussion relative to the potential use of the currently owned land at the Wheeler Barn property and the recreation center. Think that those conversations are going to continue probably for weeks, months, or possibly even longer. But the reality is that whatever the outcome of those conversations is, I think the Select Board feels, I know I feel, I know multiple folks in our boards, committees, and departments feel, that having ownership of this contiguous property will only be to our benefit at this point, whatever that future use might be. A little bit different conversation than our last conversation about a land acquisition over on Conker Street with a turkey farm. We did not own contiguous property at that spot, so that made it a little bit more challenging. It was a much larger parcel as well, in a clearly commercial area or bounding a commercial area. Certainly was a different opportunity. There's a potential, you know, that should this all come to fruition, which at the moment is an if, that we are all hopeful and optimistic on for a special town meeting in the month of January to address an acquisition. So just to make folks aware of that as they're thinking about it. We don't have a date selected yet, but I think, you know, if this all continues in the direction that it's going, that should probably be known as soon as the next Select Board meeting in two weeks. So just want to be upfront with folks about this opportunity, which looks to be a tremendous opportunity for the town. So thank you, Madam Chair, I hope that was a.
That was excellent, thank you so much. Does anybody want to add anything to that?
That's good.
Okay, let's move on to licensing rules.
Madam Chair, there's one.
Oh, there was one more, sorry. Review and affirm special municipal employee designation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As has been our practice for the past couple of years, we asked the Human Resources Director to review with department boards, departments, boards, and committees the need for special municipal employees. This designation is critical for our ability to run many of the programs that involve seasonal or part-time employees, particularly in the current labor environment that we're dealing with. But we have a number of folks who are willing and able to serve the town in multiple paid capacities. So in order for that to happen, you know, they need to be designated accordingly. These designations are certainly not permanent, nor are they intended to be permanent. But they are critical right now for our ability to provide staffing. And after having a conversation with departments, boards, and committees, and Human Resources Directors recommending that we affirm the current list, there is no need to expand that list at this point. I think there are a couple of areas where we feel that as we go through some transition in the next year or so, we may be able to remove some of the positions that are on there, but we don't feel comfortable doing that at the current moment. We have some situations where we have a position that's been designated, and they play an important backup role that they might not be able to play right now if we were to remove the designation, at least not legally play. So I would ask the board to consider affirming the previous votes for the designation and know that we don't take that request lightly and that we continue to look for the ability to not need to rely on these positions.
You have a motion?
We do. Madam Chair, I move to reconfirm the vote of December 19th, 2022, designating the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to master under law, Chapter 268A. Parks and Recreation, Infant Toddler Instructor, After-School Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Director, Summer Scape and Kid Connections, Summer Program Assistant Directors, Summer Counselors. For the Police Department, Matron, Crossing Guard, Facilitators for the Youth Action Committee, Youth Action Team, excuse me. Council on Aging, Van Driver, Program Coordinator. For the Finance Committee, Finance Committee Reporting Secretary. For the Library Department, Substitute Library Technician. And for the Health Department, Public Health Nurse. Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call because we have Mr. Sudo on Zoom. So, Mr. Sudo.
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wongler?
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Kalik?
Aye.
And Chair is done.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, and license renewals.
Say something very brief if you'd like. So we're going through the annual license renewal process. Yes, this is not generally terribly interesting work.
Wow, way to clear a room.
Yeah. It is important work, but it's not terribly interesting work.
Thank you all for coming.
Nearly all of these are renewals of existing licenses. If somebody's coming to us for a new license or change in their license, they require generally a separate meeting review or even a public hearing. None of these are that. These are renewals of licenses for many of the businesses here in town. For the board to know, we contact operational departments here in town and get their feedback on compliance issues to make sure that when we bring someone here for renewal, that we know that they are in compliance when need be, and generally if they aren't, they work to get into compliance during the licensing period. So it plays an important role for our operating departments to know that the select board is, you know, looking out for compliance with whatever regulations or requirements departments might have. Something is coming to you here this evening, it's because they have already demonstrated full compliance or action. There are others that are still in that process that will come to you at the December 18th meeting, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading Maynard LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts Incorporated, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donut 7 LLC, The Hornet's Nest, Catherine's Pizza, Andrea's House of Pizza, Young Yohan Brothers Incorporated, doing business as Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Wayama Group LLC, doing business as Mario's Restaurante, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, PH Wealth Incorporated, doing business as China Cuisine Incorporated, Molly's Store Incorporated, doing business as Ralit Ryer Store, Beyond Bagels Incorporated, Wendy's, McDonald's, Nan Centric Cafe, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports, Spirits, and Steaks, and Ajmer Sons Incorporated, doing business as Nick's Place.
Second. Okay, I have the motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
And Chair is aye. Moving on to appointments.
There are more motions.
Oh, there's more more.
There's a number of motions.
Okay.
This is where it goes back.
Okay.
Oh, we haven't read the bills?
No, no, we still have the same.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there are, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, before this next motion, yes, I'm just going to recuse myself. Mrs. McNeil combined all of these where there were Conrington Prager employees from the elderly, which I appreciate that, thank her for doing. But I'm just going to recuse myself so that there's no issue.
You have a family.
We're the family member that works at one of these establishments.
Yeah, okay. So let it be noted that Mrs. Manu Pelli has recused herself.
Madam Chair, through you, as we're going through this, for those who don't know, the recording secretary is participating via Zoom here this evening. She is recording in the minutes, and I know she will reflect that in the minutes as well.
Thanks, Mrs. McNeil.
Mrs. Manu Pelli, only one establishment they're working for? I mean, years past, she had, you know, she's cutting back on her hours?
No.
She's slacking off.
Come on.
She is not.
Hardworking guy, there.
She must have seen my son too at Starbucks, because that's why that one's in there. Yeah, he's in a different one now, but, yeah, that's funny.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements, Starbucks Coffee, number 1984, Dos Logos LLC, doing business as Apothecary Ale's Brewery and Kitchen, V and R North Reading LLC, doing business as Horseshoe Lounge, and Grill 19 Governor Group LLC, doing business as Teresa's Prime, Grill 19.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Chair is aye, Mrs. Manu Pelli is recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular alcohol license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Young Yohan Brothers Incorporated, doing business as Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant Lounge Incorporated, PH Wealth, doing business as China Cuisine Incorporated, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports, Spirits, and Steaks, and Wayama Group LLC, doing business as Mario's Restaurant.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Are you still recused from that? Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
And Chair is aye.
Madam Chair, before this, sorry to interrupt. I do want to recuse myself from this next motion because I do see I have a family member that works at one of these establishments.
Okay, let it be noted, Mrs. Manu Pelli's recused herself.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular alcohol license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. V and R North Reading LLC, doing business as Horseshoe Lounge, Dos Logos LLC, doing business as Apothecary Ale's Brewery and Kitchen, and Grill 19 Governor Group LLC, doing business as Teresa's Prime, Grill 19.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second from Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
The Chair is aye, and Mrs. Manu Pelli's recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following general on premises alcohol license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ultra Sheep Events LLC, doing business as Ultra Sheep Events at Hillview Country Club.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class license to.
Ms. Chair, prior to this motion, I'd like to recuse myself from class one, two, and three auto licenses, as I have a family member that currently holds a class two license. Class one license has the same ability as a class two, same rights as a class three, and class two is the same as three, so I'll be recusing myself on all three classes of level deal sale licenses.
Let it be noted, Mr. O'Leary has recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class license to expire January 1, 2025, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Dushak, DB, doing business as national sales, Mel Kombian Subaru, Cat with Boston Incorporated, North Reading Motorsports.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second from Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
And Chair is aye, Mr. O'Leary is recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class two licenses to expire January 1, 2025, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Honka Motor Vehicle Sales LLC, Lika Incorporated, doing business as Rob 28 Motors, Brian Dushak, doing business as national sales, AJ Motors Incorporated, and P and T Auto Sales.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second from Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye, Mr. O'Leary is recused.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class three license to expire January 1, 2025, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Dushak, doing business as national sales.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye, Mr. O'Leary is recused.
Madam Chair, oh, are you back, bringing back Steve?
I'm back.
Welcome back.
Everybody's back, yeah.
Everybody's back.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports, Spirits, and Steaks.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second by Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dos Logos LLC, doing business as Apothecary Ale's Brewery and Kitchen.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mrs. Manu Pelli, you're all set with that particular establishment?
Yeah, yeah. That didn't look positive, but. Well, because she doesn't work there anymore. She doesn't work.
I know at one point she did, but.
I know, but I think Mrs. McNeil remembered it from a prior meeting, so that's probably how she separated it up. She hasn't worked there for a long, 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 long.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary. Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
And Chair is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store alcohol license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Eastgates Will-NR LLC, doing business as Eastgate Nippers, Paradise R2 Incorporated, doing business as Moving and Drive to Redemption, and One Stop Nippers Incorporated.
Second. Can you hear that?
Steve.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, and Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Divvy Yavich Incorporated, doing business as Christopher's Market, RSS Convenience Incorporated, doing business as Convenience Plus, Joe's Quick Mart, Mass LLC, doing business as Joe's Quick Mart, number 514, Molly's Store Incorporated, doing business as Ryer Store, Ari, Ari, and Julie Incorporated, doing business as Ralit 28.
I have a motion, I have a second from Mrs. Manu Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
Chair is aye.
That's it.
Yeah, and then, okay, we wrapped that up, we're going on to appointments?
Yep. Okay. I'll just continue on. Madam Chair, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment slash appointment to the commission of disabilities for terms to expire December 31, 2025. We have two openings.
You add liaison.
I add liaison. So Jason Slattery, Marion Keith, Catherine Logan, and Thomas Scunndur. As liaison, I'm ready.
Excuse me, I'll second.
Oh, sorry, that's right, sorry, I forgot that.
You missed the incumbents, so, that are on.
They're actually, shouldn't have been on because they already said they're not going to be removing the terms.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're not removing the terms. So I'm recommending Jason Slattery to go forward and fill one of the positions, and then I need to, I've been reaching out to the three candidates and I'll come back on that, remember to.
So for right now, just Jason Slattery?
Just Jason Slattery.
So I have a motion and I have a second from Mr. O'Leary. This is a, we'll be saying the name.
Yep.
Mr. Studo.
Ethan Slattery.
Mr. O'Leary.
Jason Slattery.
Mr. Wallner.
Jason Slattery.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Jason Slattery.
And Chair is Jason Slattery.
Thank you. Conservation Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place the nominations of following names for reappointment to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire on December 31, 2026, and there's two openings. Jenny, incumbent, Thomas Sanchez, incumbent, and Anne Traulinger.
Second.
And who is, I am the liaison.
I am the liaison, yes. So consultation with the chair, we're recommending the appointment, reappointment of the incumbents, James Chaney and Thomas Sanchez.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. This is a name call. Mr. Studo.
Mr. Chaney, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chaney, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Wallner.
James Chaney, Thomas Sanchez.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
James Chaney, Thomas Sanchez.
And Chair is James Chaney and Thomas Sanchez. Thank you.
Process serving constables. Madam Chair, I move to place the nomination of following names for reappointment, appointment as process serving constables for terms to expire in December 31, 2024. There's five openings. Douglas Lab, incumbent, Douglas Rosati, incumbent, and Douglas Mercurio Esquire.
David. Madam Chair, David Rosati. David Rosati.
David Rosati.
Did I say that?
You said Douglas.
I thought you said Douglas.
You said Douglas twice.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's second.
Okay, and I am the liaison for the constable. Am I so?
I believe you are.
I think I still am.
You are tonight.
I am now. So the incumbents and then Douglas Mercurio, so they will all be.
All three.
Yeah, all three, and I'm very happy to have Doug Mercurio step up because we are really in need of constables, so, and I know personally, he actually works in.
Same building as you?
Same building as the, and Mr. O'Leary, so, he's an attorney there, so he is a good candidate, so. So I have a motion.
You're recommending that we reappoint?
Yes.
The incumbents.
Yes, and then the Seminario. So, Mr. Studo.
Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Douglas Mercurio.
Mr. O'Leary.
Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Douglas Mercurio.
Mr. Wallner.
Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Douglas Mercurio.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Douglas Mercurio.
And Chair is Douglas Lab, David Rosati, and Douglas Mercurio.
Culture Council. Madam Chair, I move to place the nomination of following names for appointment to the Culture Council for term to expire in December 31, 2026. There are four openings. Nancy Ludwig, who's the incumbent, Kathleen Desqua, Bonnie Gibson, Rafael Shapiro, Akam Rahman, Julie Elkins, Christine Gandolfo, and Elizabeth Mitchell. I'm the liaison, and for tonight, we're just going to go with Nancy Ludwig, who's the incumbent, and then she's now the chair for that group, she's going to be talking to everybody else after that, so just one nomination. Nancy Ludwig.
Second, that too. Did you get second?
I didn't, so, thank you. So I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
What were the four names again?
So it's just Nancy Ludwig.
There's only one number.
Okay, that's my thought. Because it says four openings, that's why I was confused from it.
Yeah.
Okay, Nancy Ludwig.
Mr. O'Leary.
Nancy Ludwig.
Mr. Walner.
Nancy Ludwig.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Nancy Ludwig.
And Chair is Nancy Ludwig.
Okay. Force Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment as member to the Force Committee as per term to expire in December 31, 2026. One opening. Allison Toledo, who we've all met, and so glad she's renewed her, going forward on our, on our future work.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Mr. Studo.
Allison Toledo.
Mr. O'Leary.
Allison Toledo.
Mr. Walner.
Allison Toledo.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Allison Toledo.
And Chair is Allison Toledo.
Okay. Hillview Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Hillview Commission for terms to expire on December 31, 2026. There's three openings. Charles Carucci incumbent, Francis Hatchey incumbent, William King incumbent, Nicholas McPherson, and Carol Mason.
And Mr. O'Leary.
Second.
And Mr. O'Leary, you are the liaison.
And again, I am recommending the three incumbents for reappointment. As the board is well aware, they've been working very hard. These three members are long-term members of the Commission and have been great stewards for the community and the Commission in making sure that the enterprise is successful and deserve reappointment. So Mr. Carucci, Mr. Hatchey, and Mr. King.
So I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
Charles Carucci, Francis Hatchey, William King.
Mr. O'Leary.
Charles Carucci, Francis Hatchey, William King.
Mr. Walner.
Charles Carucci, Francis Hatchey, William King.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Charles Carucci, Francis Hatchey, William King.
And the Chair is Charles Carucci, Francis Hatchey, and William King.
Okay. Moving on to the Historical Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Historical Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2026. There's five openings. Joanna Williams Hoxa incumbent, Francine Coughlin incumbent, Brian McCollough, Andrew Pearson, and Matthew Page.
Second.
And Mr. O'Leary, the liaison.
Correct. And what I'll be asking the board to do is to appoint three people this evening of the five openings. We've been unable to contact one of the people who had a calf in, and the other one, we're going to be recommending to another appointment this evening, is Page. So this evening, I'm asking my fellow board members to appoint Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, and Brian McCollough. Just Francine is the current chair and has made contact with everybody in the unit as far as our recommendations to the board.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, Brian McCollough.
Mr. O'Leary.
Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, Brian McCollough.
Mr. Walner.
Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, and Brian McCollough.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, and Brian McCollough.
And Chair is Joanna Williams Hoxa, Francine Coughlin, and Brian McCollough.
Okay. Moving on to Historic District Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Historic District Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2026. Four openings. Mark Hall incumbent, Paul Chapman incumbent, Thomas Parker incumbent, and Matthew Page.
Second.
And Mr. O'Leary again.
Right. I will be recommending all people who have sought appointment, but before I do so, I would like to acknowledge the service of David Hamm, longtime member of the Historic District Commission, Historic Land Furniture Society, lifelong resident of the town. He used to said it, to pass the baton. He says, thinks it's about time it passes it on to somebody else. And he, by the way, highly endorsed Mr. Page to take his place. Mr. Page is somewhat of a new resident of the town, last two, three years, maybe four years. He purchased the home right across from the bachelor's school, new parsonage in Sawyer property, across from the third meeting house. So he has a vested interest in the Historic District Commission and terrific guy. And has already been attending meetings and is well informed as to what's going on, and would be a great addition. But again, to Mr. Hamm, I expressed the board's appreciation for his service when I spoke with him. I went through that publicly again this evening. What he's given to the community over the years and decades is immeasurable. I appreciate his long-term service to the community and to the Historic District Commission. So I'll be recommending Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, Matthew Page.
I have a motion. I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, Matthew Page.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, Matthew Page.
Mr. Walner.
Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, Matthew Page.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, Matthew Page.
And Chair is Mark Hall, Paul Chapman, Thomas Parker, and Matthew Page.
Library Trustees. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to Library Trustees for terms to expire on December 31, 2026. Two associate openings, two full openings. Kate Gabriello incumbent, Jennifer Stritzel Thompson incumbent, and Mariska Canal.
Second.
And who's the liaison? Oh, Mrs. Manny Pelly.
I'm going to recommend Katie Gabriello and Jennifer Stritzel Thompson for the two full openings, and Mariska Canal for the associate opening.
Do we have to clarify that when we say their name?
Yeah, we'll do two separate votes.
Two separate votes? Okay, so...
Oh, I just said it all together because it's...
Yeah, it's all together.
So the incumbents just fulfill the two present opening for the full.
Then you just make another...
And then make another motion?
Make another motion for associate.
Okay. So right now...
We're just doing the full.
We have, we have a motion for the full opening. And I have a second from Mr. O'Leary.
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Studo. Just the two top names.
They're doing the full, right?
Yeah.
Katie Gabriello incumbent for a full, Jennifer Stritzel Thompson incumbent for a full.
Mr. O'Leary.
Katie Gabriello, Jennifer Stritzel Thompson.
Mr. Walner.
Katie Gabriello, Jennifer Stritzel Thompson.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Katie Gabriello, Jenny Thompson.
And Chair is Katie Gabriello and Jennifer Stritzel Thompson. So now we'll have a motion for the associate.
Yep. So Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to Library Trustees for terms to expire December 31, 2026. Two associate openings.
Just make, just put her name forward.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mariska Canal.
Okay, I have a, did I have a second?
Second.
A second. Sorry. So I have a motion. I have a second by Mrs. Manny Pelly. Mr. Studo.
Mariska Canal for associate.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mariska Canal.
Mr. Walner.
Mariska Canal.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Mariska Canal.
And Chair is Mariska Canal.
Martins Pond Study Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment appointment to the Martins Pond Study Committee for terms to expire on December 31, 2026. There's two openings. Lori Chase, Steve Coriel, Michael Hay, Robert Barthouse, and Anne Traulinger.
Second.
And you are the liaison, Mr. Walner?
Liaison, yep. And as we know, that group has been doing a great group. So far, they'd like to bring forward one name, Lori Chase, as they'd like to bring forward. And then when they contact the others, if they get in contact with them, they might bring forward more. So just one name for tonight. Lori Chase.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
Lori Chase.
Mr. O'Leary.
Lori Chase.
Mr. Walner.
Lori Chase.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Lori Chase.
And the Chair is Lori Chase.
Okay. Recycling Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as member to the Recycling Committee for an indefinite term. Three full openings, three associate openings. Bonnie Gibson, Kristen Couture, Marissa Morello, and Nick Avad.
Second.
And I believe you are the liaison, Mr. Walner?
In this case, we're just, again, we're just going to go with one tonight, Bonnie Gibson, for a full opening.
Is that unusual to have an indefinite open, an indefinite term?
It is. There aren't many that don't have a term, but I believe the Recycling Committee has a lot of them.
Yeah. Seems unusual.
Till they leave us.
Not getting off the hook.
For whatever reason.
If there's more interest, we're going to put him on.
The Supreme Court judges got treated that well.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. And Mr. Studo.
Bonnie Gibson.
Mr. O'Leary.
Bonnie Gibson.
Mr. Walner.
Bonnie Gibson.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Bonnie Gibson.
And the Chair is Bonnie Gibson.
Oh, more. Veterans Event Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as associate member of the Veterans Event Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2026. Four associate openings. Roberta Sanchez, who's the incumbent, Kenneth Ravioli incumbent, John Watson, Catherine Logan, Lisandria Thomas, James Gagnon, and Caitlin Weaver.
Second.
And I am the liaison. So we're going to be putting, so I'm confused on that script and Mr. Gilberto. Roberta Sanchez is an associate. I know we talked about this earlier.
I'll pull it up right now, but I believe so, yes.
I just want to make sure because...
Yeah, I know the intention is not to change anybody's position, but let me just pull that up.
Yeah, I think that was...
You said Roberta Sanchez is an incumbent, Kenneth Ravioli is an incumbent.
Correct. Or associate, yeah, but we were confused about full and associate. She is an associate?
She is, yes.
Okay, okay. So we'll be filling three of those spots with the two incumbents and then John Watson. The others, one, we haven't been able to get a hold of to pass on it, and the other one, we are waiting for her to come to a meeting. So we'll probably be bringing her forward. And just for future knowledge, what will be happening soon as we are merging the Veterans Memorial Committee with the Veterans Events Committee, that is in the works. John Watson has asked to, he was the chair of the Memorial Committee, so he has asked to become associate of the Veterans Event Committee.
That's going to open my second. His name's not on the action.
Oh.
Yeah. So, so, so I'll be, we'll be doing Roberta Sanchez, I just lost the screen. Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, and John Watson for associate openings.
Okay.
So I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo.
Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, John Watson.
Mr. O'Leary.
Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, and John Watson.
Mr. Walner.
Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, John Watson.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, John Watson.
And the Chair is Roberta Sanchez, Kenneth Ravioli, and John Watson.
Okay, so I believe this is what you were talking about. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as regular members of the Veterans Event Committee for terms expiring December 31, 2026. And there's four regular openings. Loretta Martinez incumbent, Arthur Cole incumbent, Catherine Logan, Lisandra Thomas, James Gagnon, and Caitlin Weaver.
And did you want?
Did you want to add?
No. So, so John Watson's going to, he just wants the associate position. So for... I don't think we have, we just have the incumbents, and then that was a full, right, Mr.?
Oh, I see where you did, I see where the question's coming.
We don't have four openings.
Yeah, so that number should have been reduced to two when we split it. It's two regular positions.
Two openings, and we, and I'm, the incumbents will stay.
Okay, correct. They're both reappointments. So this was similar to a prior motion. It was combined, both associate and regular. We split it, but when, when I split it, I didn't reduce the four to a two.
Okay.
So that's why it says four. It should be two, yeah.
Okay. Got it.
I'm great.
All right. So we had the motion. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Oh, did you already second or no?
No.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Because I thought you already made your recommendation to us.
Well, I was questioning the openings.
She was contemplating.
But the recommendation is the incumbents, Loretta and Arthur, so. Mr. Studo.
Loretta Martinez, Arthur Cole.
Mr. O'Leary.
Loretta Martinez, Arthur Cole.
Mr. Walner.
Loretta Martinez, Arthur Cole.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Loretta Martinez, Arthur Cole.
And the Chair is Loretta Martinez and Arthur Cole.
Okay. State Ethics Liaison. Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Susan Duplin as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December 31, 2024.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Manny Pelly. Any further discussion? Mr. Studo.
Susan Duplin.
Mr. O'Leary.
Susan Duplin.
Mr. Walner.
Susan Duplin.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Susan Duplin.
And Chair is Susan Duplin.
Town Treasurer. Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December 31, 2024.
Second. You guys are killing me today.
You get to call it.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manny Pelly. Any further discussion? Mr. Studo.
It's Mary Ann.
Mary Ann McKay. Mr. O'Leary.
Mary Ann McKay.
Mr. Walner.
Mary Ann McKay.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Mary Ann McKay.
And the Chair is Mary Ann McKay.
Madam Chair, there's one more that I'd like to take care of tonight. We had the final calf come in late this afternoon, this evening. This is for the Water Commission.
So I, don't mind I make the motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a member to the Water Commission for indefinite term, two full openings, and two associates. Now, this evening, we'd like to just do the two full associates, Mr. Raguchi and myself. We've not been able to get in touch with the other two people at this particular time, so we just want to do the two full openings. Vincent Raguchi and Andrew Street, both incumbents.
Andrew what?
Street.
Street?
Yep.
Second. Okay, we have a motion?
Yeah, that was the motion.
Motion is second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Manny Pelly. Any further discussion?
So once again, it's Vincent Raguchi and Andrew Street.
Did you have them for three years terms?
Yes, no, this is indefinite. That's what it says here.
Water question.
That was the motions that were forwarded to us previously.
That one.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, that one doesn't sound right.
Okay, let's see. I'm sorry. It says indefinite here, but then it says December 31st, 2026. So with your okay, Mrs. Manny Pelly, I will amend the motion to re, for term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay, I have a revised motion and a revised second. Mr. Studo.
Vincent Raguchi, Andrew Street.
Mr. O'Leary.
Vincent Raguchi, Andrew Street.
Mr. Walner.
Vincent Raguchi, Andrew Street.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Vincent Raguchi, Andrew Street.
And the Chair is Vincent Raguchi and Andrew Street.
Madam Chair, through you, so, sorry, well, the confusion, it is a three year.
Yep.
Keep up the good work.
I'm glad you were listening.
Right.
Go on to legal bills.
Yep. And I'd like to thank everybody who has stepped up for a committee. Thank you. And we can move on to legal bills.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for October 22, 23, in the amount of $18,224.74. As follows, general, $15,732.24. Labor, $446.50. 20L, $2,046. And for a total of $18,224.74.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing, yeah? You're thinking? Hearing none. Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manny Pelly.
Aye.
Chair is aye. That's it for legal bills?
That's it.
Town administrators, read for.
Madam Chair, through you, just to follow up on the earlier part of the conversation, I know this old and new business and what number reports, but I do want to echo the sentiment to condemn antisemitism or any sort of intolerance or hate. I know it's not my place to speak in the earlier part of the meeting, but I do feel it's important to convey that. And I also want to thank the board for focusing those in the community who are looking for a way to be seen or heard or support toward the event on Sunday, the menorah lighting. I think that's a great thought to, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walner, for bringing that.
Yeah, appreciate that. And I'll say that the Fire Department came last year and helped do that. So Chief was there allowing some of the other firemen to help celebrate. So I think they're going to be doing the same thing, as we share. I haven't confirmed it, but I know that... That's the intent, at least. Yeah, same intent.[1741.64]
It's a good event. Madam Chair, through you, the more routine matters of the report. After following the required procurement process from the federal government, the town is selecting right peers to continue design of the proposed wastewater system connecting to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. The total cost of the contract is two million, nine hundred and three thousand dollars, as was reviewed in September. Beginning final design now will ensure that we stay ahead of the master T construction timeline. Final design is not anticipated to be completed by the time a late winter or early spring special town meeting occurs, and should the project not be approved at special town meeting or at the ballot, design work would end. Scope and funding summary are attached to my report for the board members, for anyone who wishes to see that. And this is in accordance with the presentation we made to the Select Board at the meeting in September. Both of the towns' home roof petitions relative to retired Police Lieutenant Romeo and the Chestnut Street Bridge had public hearings in November. I attached copies of testimony that I submitted on behalf of the town, and I do want to recognize and thank our legislative delegation for their efforts to move both of those bills through the process as expeditiously as possible, given where we find ourselves in the legislative session. I think it's been all over the news that during the informal part, but there was a lot of progress that was made leading up to the end of the formal part two weeks ago. So thank you to Representative Jones and Senator Tark. North Running Public Schools has been awarded a fifty thousand dollar hate crime prevention grant by the State Department of Early and Secondary Education. Successful applicants received funding to establish or expand programs designed to prevent hate crime and incidences of bias in selected schools. The efforts are expected to include collaboration with local organizations, including local human rights organizations that have ongoing local relationships and expertise in promoting equity, building positive school climate, preventing hate crimes, and addressing bias-motivated incidents, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion that happens in the school committees, I do want to recognize that they sought and received a fifty thousand dollar grant. Flint Memorial Library Strategic Plan for Library Service for Fiscal Year 2024 or 2028 has been approved by the state, and I attached a copy for your information. Finally, the Yard Waste Drop-Off Center at the DPW facility on Chestnut Street will remain open this past weekend and the upcoming weekend of December 9th and 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, and from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday. The final curbside yard waste collection will take place this Saturday, December 9th, and items must be curbside by 6:30 a.m. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
I think it's important to again highlight that the North Running Public Schools was awarded a five hundred thousand dollar grant for hate crime prevention.
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Excuse me, fifty thousand.
Five hundred would be.
Fifty thousand, fifty thousand is still significant, anything just an ongoing effort on the part of the School Department, Town Administration, everybody else to ensure that everybody is treated fairly and equitably and minimize the impact of hate crimes that can happen anywhere, even in our whole community. So quite often, we're still doing stuff, despite what people think we're quiet about things. And then the other thing is, I did have a, I did look at the Library Strategic Plan. Terrific, you know, they did a wonderful job of putting that together, they provide terrific services, and please convey my appreciation, I'm sure the boards, to the librarian, the librarian and staff over there, doing a perfect job, and the trustees.
The trustees.
Through the liaison, please do, they put together a very package, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, library's very vibrant, I mean, when you look at those numbers, it's really incredible, like the numbers, they're the really central part of our town. Just a, just a quick question, could we, I have more neighbors stop me and ask me about when is the, you know, the bridge going to be opened up, because they think it's, we're just not doing anything. Can we just literally put some sort of sign up there saying, you know, like permitting is coming here, and, you know, the estimated date is coming in here, so they don't think we're just sitting on it, not doing anything? You just, because it seems to be just a sort of spot that people need. Maybe we don't remind them enough about that we have steps to go through in order to get it done. I mean, we're going as fast as we kind of know we are, but if we can just put a sign there letting them know what's going on, I think that would just take the temperature down.
Yeah, like, signs that says proposed ribbon cutting, September, with a date.
We don't actually have, none of us on the board have the qualifications to do the road work or bridge work or architectural design or anything either. We're not going to be out there painting lines on the road or shoveling or some of the things that we read about that there's an expectation that we do that. I, I wouldn't qualify for any of that type of work, and I, I wouldn't think it would be structurally sound for any of you to do it either, so. Might as well add that to it.
I'm just saying, let's.
Might as well add that to the comment.
Little sign about, you know, if we can put some estimated dates down or, you know, things that are.
It'll probably be a simple estimated reopening at some point, is my guess. We probably won't put too much on there for the timeline. For those at home, you know, we are talking about roughly three years from now when that bridge would reopen. We are hoping that we have made some gains by quickly coming up with the Article 97 plan and with getting the legislative action and the bill moving so close to final approval and what we hope will be the administration sign off early in the year. That's important because it allows our engineers to continue with the design, the final design, rather than have to wait to determine whether the land that they need to use will actually be available to them or not. How much that will shave off of the schedule, I don't know, but I think we're hopeful it will do something to shorten up that schedule. So when I talk about the legislative process, you know, the rubber hits the proverbial road when they're able to actually make the design because they know what land is available to them. So that's, it's actually a really important step. It's more than just, you know, a bill out there being addressed, it actually gives us the authority to finish a design on a bridge, give that design to the state environmental and infrastructure permitting authorities, let them review it. This didn't just pop up in July or June of this year, we first started talking about it. The bridge was identified as a concern more than a year ago, and we submitted and sought funding to begin the work to the design, that allowed us to come to you with a design over the summer for you to look at. If we had not done that, we would be that much further behind at this point, so. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair, but we will look into sign.
Thank you, something like that, even on our town website, you know, just updating, you know.
They just remind that it's closed because it's unsafe to travel, and that's why it had to be shut.
Right, and it's government, everything goes slow.
No, I know, it's just, just, if we don't, if we don't tell people, if we don't tell people, they just think we're not doing the job.
Mr. Griffin, did you?
Yeah, I just have a general question. I sat in some of those meetings with the bridge design. And has that been, are we close to finalizing, are you guys close to that decision of the actual the bridge itself versus the culverts? And, and if that is the case, my second question is, are we as a town looking at any other potential projects that have that type of impact on the community as far as the monetary value that's sitting in waiting, that hasn't been discussed in this, in this detail? If that is the case, and we know that there's something coming, is there also maybe the potential to backing up a little bit on the proposed plan for Chestnut as it is right now and moving into maybe a culvert to save some money on that, to allocate the difference to, say, another said project of that caliber?
Mr. Gilberto, I'm going to let you have that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two other bridge or culvert locations that are being discussed right now, one of which has been approved for funding, a combination of federal ARPA funding and state small bridge program funding that we expect will be available to us next year. And that is to reconstruct the Park Street Bridge near the Masonic Temple. It's a small bridge on Park Street in that location. That project has what we believe is sufficient funding in place and will be happening timeline slightly ahead of this project because the design is further along, it's also a less involved design. But that reconstruction of that location is going to rely on existing abutments, which helps keep the cost a little bit lower than what we were looking at on Chestnut Street. The other that we've talked about, I think at October town meeting, Boroughs Road, we have a series of three culverts and a separate single culvert that are, they're aging, I will say. You know, they're not, we've not been advised, and they're not in the condition that Chestnut Street is in, so that road remains open. And we've been able to make some repairs, but we are looking at whatever streamlined repair might be at that spot. What that is, we're not exactly sure, but we've tried to look at that more as a replacement rather than, or a reconstruction rather than a replacement, but there are challenges given the condition of what's underground there, the shape of the pipes, et cetera. So those are two others that are in the queue. In terms of Chestnut Street, the Select Board, I think, had two conversations over the summer this past year based on the work that had been done over the year prior leading up to it. And I think we all arrived at the most efficient and expeditious approach that was likely to be approved was a single-span bridge rather than culverts. And that's the design that they have been working on, our engineers have been working on for the past year. It's the design that is likely to receive support from the State Department of Transportation, which is required to sign off on the bridge because they then conduct the inspections after the fact. But there's also an environmental component to it, and that's the design that the environmental entities have also indicated that they wish to see. That environmental impact also gives us a recreational advantage, we're able to actually have, you know, small watercraft underneath the bridge there. So we know the design, we know the rough estimates of the cost. You know, we're doing everything we can to try to keep the cost controlled, but there are state environmental and construction permitting restrictions that we need to stay within in order to bring these over the finish line, so those are a factor. I hope that answered your question, I know that was a lot.
Can I just add to that, too, Mr. Madam Chair?
I just don't want to ignore, Mr. Sudo's had his hand up for quite a while, I just want to address him. Mr. Sudo.
It's real simple, we can put a sign that says when the state lets us know, we'll let you know. That's what it is. We just talk, oh, twenty minutes, I could have just answered that. That's what it's been, it's been from the beginning. That's it, it's real, real simple, I know in government we like to use a lot of words, but it's that simple. When the state lets us know, we'll let you know. The environmental review process has to go, they have a backlog, they're not in a rush. Like, so, that's the absolute truth. I know we don't want to rustle any feathers because, you know, you don't want to call the state agency inefficient, God forbid, but that's the truth. So, Mr. Wallner, I'd say that if I got support, I'd be open to making it even in our website, if we're waiting for that, and that is the main impediment, and am I incorrect in saying that, Mr. Gilberto?
I would say at this step, through you, Madam Chair, it is a component of it, but the indications are that the state agencies are all working as efficiently as they can right now.
Well, but my question is, my understanding is that it would take, from the presentation, one year to actually do a repair after we're done making sure we don't kill any goldfish?
Correct.
Okay, so that's my getting, so the construction component is one year. So that's what I've been telling people, or roughly, hip or tape, and I'm saying, so out of that three years, two years is making sure that, you know, Jim the earthworm is not affected, and that's the truth. So, I don't know why, let's just say it, because that's what I've been telling people, that as soon as we can construct, we'll construct.
All right, Mrs. Manu Pelli has to go.
Well, I also want to just put that, what we, we learned from those lengthy discussions is that what we're calling a culvert really is a culvert of a bridge, and to add a culvert would have been multiple.
Yeah.
It would have been, instead of what's there, it would have been, would have been a much more comprehensive, more difficult project to do than to do the single-span bridge, so. We, we did ask all that, we did ask that from the consultant.
We got a separate call it on it.
Same, same case, so I, I did sit in some of those meetings, and I did, and some of the plans were great, and the bridge, that all sounds great, and it can look great and all that stuff, but if the bridge is three point seven million dollars and the culvert is two point nine million dollars, that's where I'm coming from, like, that extra money between the two options and choices, is that money that can be allocated to save boroughs, because, you know. You know, that, that, that's all, I mean.
I just think, excuse me, Madam Chair, I think the delta was about six hundred thousand dollars, maybe even less than that as far as the culvert versus the, the, the single-span bridge. But the timeline associated with the construction was extremely extensive, maybe six months more for the construction, because you could only have to do a third of the river, then a third of the river, a third of the river. So with that, you run the, cost escalations are probably going to be impacted over the additional timeline, so the nuances wasn't, and, and the chances of, again, the consultants did a very good job, at least convincing me, who was a big skeptic at the time, that the ability for the town to seek waivers to put in that type of a bridge would be extremely expensive, cumbersome, and, so.
Not likely to succeed.
Yeah, not likely to succeed, no. So that's why we just said, move on, keep what they're looking for, even though it's been there for seventy-five years, it's been okay.
Yeah, I guess so, I just.
We thought about that, we were worried about the cost. They did a very good job.
Seven and the two point nine, well, there's a lot of money floating around.
They did a very good job.
If you take that and throw it in boroughs, so that the following budgets will be so.
On paper, on paper, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, I know, it did.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
We were probably talking from, just from a permitting process alone, seeking the waivers, extending it at least a year to eighteen months beyond what we're talking about already, just to get the waivers approved, and that's a wish women may.
Again, Steve, I was just looking.
No, no, makes sense. No, it's always, we're watching the money too.
All right.
Float downstream, watch the money float.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, Madam Chair, move to adjourn. Second.
A motion to adjourn, I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. Sudo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Aye.
There is aye, it's unanimous, we want to adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
So we don't have a pile of things to say?